Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held April 20, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And first order of business is a call to order.
Councilmember Wildin.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Carratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hulse.
Here.
And Mayor Alinsky.
Here, thanks.
And Councilmember Nearen is absent.
Thank you. That was the roll call, sorry. Got out of turn there. Sorry. All right, next up, please stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance. Okay, next is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do we have any council members with anything to report? All right, Mr. Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Men Zenita Outreach is offering a drive-through food chair event where perishable and non-perishable food boxes are loaded into the trunks of cars. The events are held in the parking lot on the west side of Mingus Union High School, 1801 East First Street by the tennis courts. The next event will be Wednesday, May 12 from 4:00 to 5:30 PM. For more information, feel free to contact Mike Newham at 928-649-5772. The City of Cottonwood Spring Cleanup Event will be held on Saturday, April 24 and Sunday, April 25 at the Cottonwood Transfer Station. The cleanup event is open to all City of Cottonwood residents at no charge who provide a proof of residency with either a driver's license or utility bill. And then I wanted to let council know the Chief Gazelle has been asked to speak during a meeting at a police drug unit commanders from across the state at the Arizona Narcotics Association Conference this week in Phoenix.
Good. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're going to move on to a call to the public. And this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action. Comments are limited to a three-minute time period. And I have a couple of forms here that I've received for folks that want to address the council during Call to the Public. And for those who are just coming in right now, we have yellow forms in the back, so if anyone would like to address the council, please fill out one of these forms, not just for Call to the Public, but for any item that's listed on the agenda as well. So first, I'm going to call up Ms. Penny Pugh from Congressman Gosar's office. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council. My name is Penny Pugh. I'm Congressman Gosar's District Director in Intergovernmental Affairs. And here tonight, just to remind your citizens and businesses, if you have any federal issues that maybe you're running into some red tape in that lovely bureaucracy that we love so much, please contact us. We'd be happy to help with that. We also have, hopefully, starting soon, mobile office hours. We'll be calling and trying to get space here so that we can have one of our staffers come up. And, you know, it's a little bit of a drive to Prescott, so we're happy to come over here and do those on a regular basis as needed. A lot of Social Security veteran issues. As tax season comes around, I suspect we're going to have some IRS, maybe some businesses that have PPP issues that need to be addressed, and we're happy to help with that. And I think that's all at this time. The congressman's in Washington, DC continues to, you know, fight for what we need and our, excuse me, our rights. And it's a battle right now, but we're all in it to win it. So thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh. Thanks for taking the drive up here, too. We appreciate it. All right, and then we have one other request to speak to, Call to the Public, from Tina Tutter. Tina Tutter, I may be getting your last name incorrect. Tina Tutter? She may be outside, we'll give her just a second. Okay. Okay, very good. All right. Well, that's all I've received for Call to the Public. We'll go ahead and get on with the regular agenda then. And we have a couple items under unfinished business and comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a three-minute time period per speaker. So again, unfinished business. First up is ordinance number 698, amending the zoning ordinance by adding section 428 AR-87 Zone Agricultural Residential. This is the second and final reading.
Mr. Mayor, we've received no additional comments. Nothing has changed, so unless council has questions, directors in the back if needed, but no new news.
All right, any questions from council? Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on this item? All right, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 698.
Second. All right, Councilmember Henry made the motion. The vice mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse.
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky.
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right, please read ordinance number 698 by title only.
Ordinance number 698, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the city's zoning ordinance by adding a new section 428 AR-87 Zone Agricultural Residential.
All right, thank you. And again, one more ordinance up for second and final is ordinance number 697, amending the zoning ordinance by amending section 405 Signs. Again, second and final reading.
Again, Mr. Mayor, no changes, no updates, no comments, so unless council has a question, we're ready.
All right, anything additional from council? Anyone here from the public to comment on this item? All right, then I go ahead and motion to approve ordinance number 697.
Second.
All right, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Wildin seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry.
Yes.
Councilmember Carratt.
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse.
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky.
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right, please read ordinance number 697 by title only.
Ordinance number 697, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending section 405 Signs G Regulation applicable to signs in commercial and industrial zones. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen or requests, in which case the item will be removed from the agenda. So we have five items tonight, excuse me, under the consent agenda. I'll read them out loud. If there's anybody out there that would like an item pooled, please indicate by waving and counsel, let me know if you'd like something pooled. Item one is contract with RH Borden &amp; Company LLC to provide an acoustic assessment of the city's wastewater collection system. Item two is approval to submit special use event permit applications to the National Park Service, town of Clarkdale and Arizona State Parks Board for the Cottonwood Vintage Run scheduled for June 12, 2021. Item three is resolution number 3088 authorizing the police department to submit fiscal year 2022 grant proposal to the governor's office of highway safety, seeking funds to cover overtime expenses associated with the department's DUI task force detail. And item four is resolution number 3089, authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the governor's office of highway safety fiscal year 2022 funding cycle for selective traffic enforcement patrol overtime costs. Item five is resolution number 3090, authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the governor's office of highway safety fiscal year 2022 funding cycle for selective traffic enforcement speed signs. Is there an item that a council member would like to have pooled? No, a member of the public? All right, I'll motion then to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, it's approved. And let's pool resolution number 3088 for the clerk to read it by title only. Resolution number 3089 and resolution number 3090 as well.
Resolution number 3088, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the police department to submit a fiscal year 2022 grant proposal to the governor's office of highway safety, seeking funds to cover overtime expenses associated with the department's DUI task force detail. Resolution number 3089, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the governor's office of highway safety fiscal year 2022 funding cycle for selective traffic enforcement patrol overtime costs. And resolution number 3090, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the submission of a grant proposal in connection with the governor's office of highway safety fiscal year 2022 funding cycle for selective traffic enforcement speed signs. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we go into new business, and the following items are for council discussion, consideration, possible legal action. Again, folks, if you want to address the council tonight, there's yellow forms in the back. We appreciate you filling one out. Just one item tonight, item considering the resolution number 3094 declaring the City of Cottonwood as a Bill of Rights sanctuary city. Mr. Corbin, you going to introduce this, or should we have?
No, I'll go ahead and just quickly introduce it. So over the last several months, we've heard from our community members asking for the council to address this issue. And so worked with our city attorney and a couple council members to bring the version we have in front of you for council's consideration. And with that, I think the resolution speaks for itself, but I'd be happy to answer any questions and as well as the city attorney if need be.
Okay, thank you. All right, those council members that supported getting this on the agenda, would you care to introduce it or speak on it? Okay. Council, would you like to have a discussion about this, or would you like to hear from those folks that would like to address council first? Okay, great. Let's go ahead and roll into a public comment then. And we'll start with Dyson Boatman. And again, if I'm butchering your name, I do apologize. Mr. Boatman, did I get that correct?
Yeah.
You're welcome to address the council. We're going to limit speakers to a three-minute time period. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. We appreciate you taking this up and talking about it and speaking about it. Without our rights, we're nothing. Our rights are our most important thing that we have. This little piece of paper you have here has been passed out across our nation, 20,000 almost of them. I will fight, and I will fight, and I will fight peacefully for my rights and your rights and everyone else's rights. We cannot let this administration take our country down. It just cannot happen. We've been here too long and accomplished way too much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next we have Mr. Nocito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I have a list of 670 signatures. It's a petition that's been circulated throughout the community, gathered in support of this resolution. So you're, I'll submit it in a second. You're in good stead with the community as you continue to do this. I just want to remind you again, I'm a retired 32-year veteran of three municipalities, and every position I held, every city I worked for, I was sworn into office, not office, but into the position, working for the city to uphold the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the state, and any local laws and other local agencies. You've done the same thing when you were elected, so I just encourage you to stick to your oath and follow through, and I appreciate your taking this up, and thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Mitchell, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I appreciate you giving me a moment or two. I, too, want to encourage you to seriously consider this and vote for it because I find myself thinking that if you wouldn't vote in favor of something like this, it makes me wonder if you have taken your oath in vain. And so according to the last speaker, Michael, who mentioned our oaths, I think you've got to, not you, but we have to be kind of blind not to see what's going on in our nation right now. We've got seemingly a government that is actually lawless. So our reason in pushing this forward is we want our community to protect the rights that God has given us. And I think that's not a lot to ask, so I appreciate a positive vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Then Ms. Penny Pugh, you are welcome to speak to this item as well.
Mayor, council, on behalf of Congressman Gosar, it was important for him to have a presence here today, given that the Constitution and the Bill of Rights are given to us to protect against a tyrannical government, which we're finding that it's not just a myth, that things like that are happening. The federal government is now imposing themselves on local and state jurisdictions, which put us all at risk. So it's important to consider this and retain that, the Constitution. I have a pocket Constitution, and Alexander Hamilton is quoted in this Constitution, and it says, "The sacred rites of mankind are not to be rummaged for among old parchments or musty records. They are written as with a sunbeam in the whole volume of human nature by the hand of the divinity itself and can never be erased or obscured by mortal power." And the congressman often says, one of the quotes from Benjamin Franklin, happened at the conclusion of the Constitutional Convention, "What have you wrought?" And he answered, "A republic if you can keep it." And I urge you all to support this and carry on. Thank you.
Thank you. We had another request from Tina Tutter. It was just to speak during Call to the Public, but I don't want to miss the opportunity for you wanted to speak on this resolution this evening.
Yes. I just feel like there is a lot of things going wrong in the world, and I just want to address that. It just feels like, what team are we on? We're all human. So it feels as if communism is forming right before our eyes, and I'm very concerned about that. I respect our freedoms, and it really feels very uncomfortable. I don't understand, and if anyone else is feeling this, or is it just me? And I'd rather spread some love around and make a community, our community, why can't we be a good example for other communities? You know? To care about our homelessness, to care about each other, and make it real, and just unite instead of separate and causing division. And it really weighs on my heart very strongly. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Tutter. I'm just, I'm trying to understand, are you in favor or opposition of the resolution proposed?
I'm in favor of freedom. I don't really understand technical terms, but I'm in favor of our freedom.
All right, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarity. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
That's all we've received, folks, unless there's anyone else out there this evening that would like to address the council, you're more than welcome to. Otherwise, we'll close the floor then and open it up for deliberation with council.
I would like to just recognize and I appreciate all the citizens of Cottonwood that brought this up and continued to persist in bringing this up so that we would take action. I took what you'd submitted, I kind of played with it a little bit. I had a lot of help by the city attorney, Steve Horton, I appreciate that very much. Helene Carratt was also behind supporting this. And in my working on this, I saw something in the Arizona Constitution, which I really liked. I'd love to meet those guys. I'll have to read up on them. But it says in the Arizona Constitution, "A frequent recurrence to fundamental principles is essential to the security of individual rights and the perpetuity of free government." So if I put all my thoughts down here, I could go a good 20 minutes and debate for hours, but I did mercifully cut this down short. So I'll just read the statement I've got. Currently in our country, we have a crisis of two constitutions, the original constitution and the living constitution. We are a divided country of two peoples and two cultures. We have two courts, even to the Supreme Court, one who considers the Constitution an unchangeable document except for the amendment process. Its true meaning is in the authorial intent of its writers. Others see it as a roadblock to their political agenda, considered a living and breathing document, changeable at the whim of political expediency. Folks, the Constitution was intended to be an impediment. It is to protect us from our government. In light of that, I've been a bit shocked at the unprecedented execution of power by the government in this last 12 months, issuing unilateral decrees, ordering the closure of churches, schools, and businesses, mandating behavior, restricting personal movement, and indefinitely suspending basic freedoms. I'm also very disappointed, even frightened, at the acquiescence of the American people, even the people of Cottonwood, Arizona, to such arbitrary, destructive, and wholly unscientific rules, restrictions, and mandates by the politicization of science. To quote Ronald Reagan, "We've got to do a better job of getting across that America is freedom, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of enterprise. And freedom is a special and rare gift, it's fragile, and it needs protection. These are issues that threaten the principles of freedom and order that we Americans often take for granted. I, for one, will defend them at all cost." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carratt, did you want to add anything? Would any other council member care to share their opinion on this?
I would love to have our chief come up, yes, you. And if this passed by chance, what detriment would it be to the police department and If any.
Well, thank you for the unexpected invitation and being pulled directly into a very spirited conversation, and that's in part our business. So from a public safety perspective, we have zero concerns about this resolution, if that helps. We are sworn to uphold the Constitution, as one of our speakers mentioned, and, excuse me, allergies. So I have to speak from a personal standpoint. I completely support the Second Amendment and the comments that Councilman Matthews made, if that helps.
Any other questions for the chief while we have him here? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I'll say that, and again, I don't want to interrupt any other council members that are eager to jump in here, but over the years, and I've served here for 16 years now, I've been asked on several different occasions to support becoming sanctuary city for a variety of reasons, and it typically happens when the pendulum swings from one administration to the next. My answer's always been fairly consistent in that we are a, we're a political subdivision of the state, and it's frankly, what we do really well is fix potholes, and I don't much like to get involved in these sorts of issues because I don't think it's really our role. We have been granted the authority to operate as a political subdivision by our state constitution, so our role is fairly restricted. And I'm just not, I've never been very comfortable with trying to be the interpreters of our Constitution because I just don't feel like that's our role. I'm also deeply concerned with any kind of movement to alter or modify any of the amendments. I'm as concerned as anyone else here is in this room, but in my mind, the solution to that is to elect representatives that you feel uphold the values of our Constitution and who will in turn appoint justices that will do the same. But for Cottonwood to essentially say that we won't uphold the Constitution, I think is in itself unlawful and unconstitutional, and I'd be really, really concerned about getting us embroiled in an argument that we frankly can't afford. So that's really been my position all along. I think as individual council members, I think we can state our support of the Bill of Rights and how important and dear it is to us, but to come together as a city and say that we're not going to follow that, should it be altered by lawmakers or justices, is, I believe, against the law. is, I believe, against the law. We have Mr. Horton here to correct me if I'm wrong, but I...
Mr. Mayor and council, the lawyer's job is to read and write law in a way as possible that's consistent with the law and the Constitution. And I can read this resolution as an affirmation, not in opposition to the Bill of Rights as interpreted. As some of you and I have discussed, the law is and has been since 1802, that the courts will ultimately decide what the law is, not other branches of government, and not individuals. So under that framework, I see this as an affirmation of the Bill of Rights and the fundamental rights that I think we all hold dear.
I think if something were to come down that this council felt were unconstitutional, our remedy would be to, to file a lawsuit and handle it in the court of law, is my understanding. I think that would be the proper way to, to handle any conflict that we felt we had.
Mr. Mayor, that's exactly right.
It's the courts that determine, correct?
Correct.
Any other?
Just to help understand this, and the way I see this and I consider this too, is this is the same as a married couple just renewing their vows. I'm not into it. I don't do it. But I understand it. It's great. So I see this as the same thing in just what Mr. Horton there said, just a reaffirmation of the oath that we've already taken.
And I understand that. I just, I guess my concern, though, I don't want to leave anyone with the expectation here this evening that, that the city of Cottonwood could do anything other than what the Constitution says we can do. So I don't want to give anyone the impression that, that we can somehow essentially secede from the Union, interpret the Constitution the way that we see fit here in Cottonwood, Arizona, and kind of go our own way because it's just not lawful. That's my, that's my concern. And I'm fine renewing my, my oath or renewing vows, as you said, Councilmember Matthews, but again, I just, I see, I see it being somewhat reckless to give anyone here the impression that there's anything that we could do to go contrary to what the Constitution says. Any other council members have anything to say here?
I would agree that this would be more of a reaffirming of our oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States of America and the state of Arizona, to abide by the laws of both the United States and the state of Arizona. I would agree with Mr. Horton. If there is a question, it should be answered in the courts. I don't believe sanctuary cities necessarily give you any special considerations. I realize that there are sanctuary cities and states in the United States right now where decisions are being made in violation of federal laws, and there doesn't appear to be any actions taken. And I think that falls back on those individual communities and states and their governments for not filing the proper charges in federal court to uphold those laws. I don't think that we would have to worry about that here. I think if a question comes up, which we view as a violation of our rights under the Constitution, Mr. Horton would be very capable in filing a lawsuit with the federal government, challenging those violations that we observe. I think this council would support filing a lawsuit in, in support of our constitutional rights and allow the courts to make the decisions. And that the decisions hopefully would be made based upon the U.S. Constitution as it's written. It's not a living constitution. It was written. It was intended to be followed. And any changes were intended to be made by amendment, with three fifths of the states approving the amendment. Otherwise, it holds. I realize that doesn't always happen with our Supreme Court, but that doesn't give us the right to violate our own Constitution in my mind.
Vice Mayor. Any other thoughts council would like to share? Ms. Corot?
I'll agree with Matthews that this is more of just reaffirming our oath. But I'm going to make two assumptions. One is I'm the only one up here that's Jewish. The other is that I'm the only one with a family member that's got numbers on their arm. The only thing necessary for that to happen again is for everybody to blindly follow orders. All this does is say we're not following those orders. And it buys us time to go and argue with the legal wife. And while we're arguing it in court, we don't have to worry about somebody doing something stupid here. Let them argue it out in court. We're not getting involved. We're not going to enforce it until the Supreme Court or whatever court it is makes that distinction.
Ms. Henry, you haven't shared any comments. You don't need to, but we could take it up for a vote now or you could share any comments you have?
I'm still on the fence. And I didn't want, I wasn't planning to comment. I don't want to steal your thunder. That's a very powerful comment that we just heard from Councilmember Corot. And we've heard very good sentiments from the public, from folks that have contacted me outside of the meeting and also from my fellow council members. This is a tough one because I believe every one of us, I can't speak from fellow council members, but I personally support the Bill of Rights. I took an oath and I hold that oath very dear when I took office, to uphold the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. My concern is a resolution is a symbol that is fairly meaningless. We don't have any manner to actually implement this. It, to me, we can't just leave a status quo if, if it comes down to it without putting our citizens at jeopardy, jeopardy of losing federal funding for important programs that we need to keep our, our citizens afloat. And so for me, I actually agree with the mayor on this one. I believe that we, as a council, are to be held to our oath. It is a potential class four felony if I violate my oath to uphold the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. But to me, if we are to go into a drawn-out battle because we are bound by this resolution, which may or may not, depending on the issue, be in the best interests of our citizens, I can't in good faith support that. So again, I didn't mean to, I wasn't planning to comment, didn't have anything prepared, wanted to hear from, from the group as a whole before I made up my mind. And I think I'm ready for a vote now.
All right, council, then I would go ahead and entertain a vote.
Do you like a motion?
If you could, please. That'd be great.
I will move to approve resolution number 3094.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Matthews made the motion and Councilmember Corot second. If we could, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
No.
Councilmember Corot?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
No.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
No. I believe the motion fails.
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion fails. Folks, listen, I know this is important to a lot of you out there. It's important to us up here as well. And I think you can be guaranteed if there is anything that comes down that is a violation that we feel as a council of our constitutional rights, we will absolutely have our attorney file a lawsuit to, to address that in, in the court of law. And, and that's, in my mind at least, how issues should be, should be handled. And it does speak to what Councilmember Matthews said too about, I think you spoke about apathy in this community and the nation in general. It is so important to elect representatives that you feel uphold our, our best and truest values here in this nation. So, because you can see that it has a resounding effect throughout our nation. So we certainly hope, as I know you all are, very engaged citizens. I hope you would continue to be engaged and try to engage younger generations as well to get out and do the best they can to, to vote and elect those representatives that represent you in our community and, and here in our nation. So, thank you. No, sir. I'm sorry. We did close the floor to the public. All right. I would move to pay the claims and adjustments.
Second.
Okay. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor made the motion. Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.